We're going to the plenarium, please. Plenarium.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. First call. Court's in session.
Are the other two going to be here?
As far as I know, Jerry usually can't make it right at seven, but he said about 7:15 or so. I haven't heard from Rich.
I did have a question, and I guess we're bringing up here. Just for the intent. On page one, I guess, of what, June 12th, or 529 King Street, there's signs that Ms. Wood said that there would be fewer parking spaces. So off-site parking may not be needed. It's almost like a contradiction. I didn't know if after fewer parking spaces, whether fewer parking spaces needed or fewer...
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so the word "needed" would just be helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll add that.
That's helpful. And another question is maybe just the way I'm reading it, maybe I don't get it. Page five, and this is, oh, about Bennett Orchard, the Sanderson property. And what says is, okay, you say that the proposed layout includes 22.6 acres of open space, or over 50% of the total area of 45, and comma, 15 acres. Is that 15 sort of a mistake? It makes sense if there is no 15 there.
Okay, I'll check.
Yeah.
There might be either a point or a mistake. I'll either check it out or...
Right. It's a comma, maybe it's a point. So I was wondering that, too. And that would be correct if you were on decimal point. And the other thing I was thinking about, which concerns me, is Chestnut Lane, where we talked about the idea that soil would not be disturbed, for, there'd be no haying, and then all of a sudden, it seems to be haying.
Yes.
And what I was understanding is just recording the fact that was presented to us there'd be no disturbance of the soil, because it seems to be the opposite case now. But that is what was sold to us.
Right, that was the agreement that you voted.
Right.
And Noel will have an update today on that.
Right. And what I was thinking is worthwhile recording the fact that they stated that no soil would be disturbed when we asked, would they be thinking of haying? And they said, oh, no, no, of course not. This week, they're all of a sudden thinking of haying, so. I'll give you a copy of this.
And to your...
So beyond that, it seemed to be fine.
Okay, good.
So we have a few corrections to the minutes.
How much will you approve with the corrections?
Second.
On a favor?
Aye.
We've nothing for the bond on Washington Drive, so we'll move forward.
Middle school drop-off lane.
So have you been weighing in?
Yes, sir.
Yes, you just mentioned there's nothing on the bond for Washington Drive.
He's not here. He didn't bring anything in before us, so we're...
They don't have the materials.
We don't have anything to talk about.
Right.
Could I just ask a question, just so you could inform me?
Sure.
When and if you post the bond, it's going to be based on X amount of work, the work that was defined originally, like, would turn around and all of that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
He's got to post whatever cost to finish the road, and depending on where he leaves it, that's going to be the cost of the bond.
So it'll be completed as defined originally?
It has to be. That's why he has to put the money up to do it.
Yeah, okay.
But he should have had stuff before us, and obviously he didn't. He didn't call, did he call us, say it was going to be late, or?
No.
No, so, since he's not here, there's nothing we can do to act on.
Okay.
And usually what happens is when they do bring in, we send it out to all the different departments to make sure that the fire department's okay with it, Jimmy Clyde from the highway department obviously weighs in heavily on it. So I have to send it all to them, so it's...
All right, it's a process.
It's a process, yeah. It's not something that gets five minutes and you're done.
Right, all right, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so now we're on to middle school drop-off lane. We've gotten letters from everybody. Are you here in that capacity?
No. It's a select...
Yeah, Steve Mark's not going to be able to make it this meeting. I would give it a shot.
Sounds like everybody wants to take those parking spaces out. The best and safest way.
Primarily?
Primarily remove them, so that there's no ambiguity to it, there's...
Who's everybody?
But he's weighing in, the...
Police chief?
Police chief, school department.
Police chief doesn't drop his kid off there. I do it, look, we do it every single day. You take those parking spaces away, after-school hours, you can't park there. I mean, what...
You see one aspect, but other people see other aspects.
What aspect on? I'm a user of the facility.
Dropping off your kids while you keep mentioning...
Right, so what other aspect?
But they're, well, you read Matt King's memo, or Steve Mark's memo.
They say that people are almost getting, kids are almost getting hit every day from doing it. It's not, they want to not get...
Almost getting hit?
Yeah, didn't you read Matt King's letter?
Yeah, but listen, that's fine. They can put whatever they want in a letter. Show me an incident. Has there ever been a written incident? Has anybody even come close to getting hit there, and then no one could witness?
Plus, percolate up to the chief of police, I think that probably...
So what? He's going to say whatever the school board wants him to say.
Well, the school race is the issue, too. I mean, yeah, it's their opinion versus yours.
Isn't it the school department's decision to decide whether they want those parking spaces in there or not? They're not asking for them, they're not being arrogant about it, they don't want the spaces...
My issue with the parking between that and Russell Street is it's a lousy design, right? There's no way to come in, drop your kid off, and integrate with the buses. You're all coming in the same place, you're all going out the same place.
Yeah.
Just getting rid of those parking spaces isn't going to solve the problem.
Yeah, who designed it? Rich Crowley and the...
I didn't design it, I'm just saying, it's a disaster. Russell Street's twice as bad.
All we can do is act on what others boards want to do. The school department's the one asking for this. They have a pretty good reason why they want to get rid of those eight spaces.
Sorry, I just wanted to complain about it.
All right. Happy now? How's the rest of the board doing?
I think going away with eight spaces is what's wanted and what makes sense. I mean, if only it's what's presented before us.
Peter?
I drop mine off the same as Jerry does, and for the most part, nobody ever parks in those spaces. There's one, once in a while parks at the very end. Otherwise, people pull up the parked spots, drop their kids off, and then pull out and keep going.
So that won't stop, though?
It's not going to, you know, it's...
Well, as long as you don't get a ticket during a football game. No, I'm serious, no, because it's an automatic spot. Last time, they ticketed people who parked up on the grass, so now, I mean, what do you...
But your biggest concern is the fact that you want to still be able to pull into that, stop for two seconds, drop, get up, keep going. If it's not a parking space and you do it, you're not going to get a ticket.
No, no, I'm saying, what happens to that space when, during, because drop-off is what, an hour? It's not even, it's half an hour.
Twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes. Pickup is maybe 20 minutes. After that, there's no reason not to park there.
I don't even park there during pickup. I park in the parking lot itself, because when the kids come out early, you can beat the buses out. If you're in there, you're sitting until the buses are gone.
But sometimes, especially if you're picking up for basketball practice, whatever, you use those parking spaces to pick up, or you park in the fire lane, which you're not supposed to, which a lot of people do, and run it.
So you're more concerned about it as a parking spot, not as a drop-off spot?
It's a functional drop-off spot while drop-offs. And no one's, I've never seen a car parked there while people drop off for that 20 minutes.
So then it's...
The bell rings, drop-off's over, goes back to being a parking spot.
So you'll still be able to drop off. The fact that they're going to lose eight parking spots, they have plenty of parking out there.
No, no, I was talking about the fact that it's to permanently remove the parking spaces. I'm not, I don't care if you ban it there in drop-off, just put a sign up that says there will be no parking here between blah, blah, blah.
There is, there's a sign there now, and nobody even, you don't even know it's there because you've never read it. Because it's there, and that's what part the problem is. That's why putting cones up isn't going to work, because people are going to ignore the cones.
But you should be able to park there afterwards.
You know what? If it's child safety and the fact that you can't have them both, I think we hear on the side of...
I think we remove the parking spots.
But those are permanent removal. I know you're not allowed to park there, we remove them.
And so that during pickup, drop-off hours, you know, that type of thing, after the, after the school hours, they become free parking spaces, you can park in that area again.
Right, that's what we want it to be in.
Right, and just, they want to remove the stripes so it doesn't entice someone to park there. So let's try, where we remove the spots, the stripes, say no parking between seven and nine, you know, whatever. After school hours, parking is acceptable.
So the details...
So we're clear, right? Because this is what bothers me about the King's letter and what they're writing about the safety. We draw, the issue is when you drop your kid off, they have to cross over the bus lane. That's where it gets a little dicey. Has nothing to do with...
Does cars park there or not?
Does crossing got standing there?
No, yeah, usually drinking a coffee next to the front door, not paying attention.
I've seen them out there.
Well, I've seen them both ways. So my point is, the real issue is whether we ban the parking or not ban the parking, the problem, safety, doesn't go away.
You're right.
So why even write a letter that's totally nonsensical to tell us that we can get the parking space away, because it's a safety issue that you're not solving by getting rid of the parking space?
Gentlemen, can I have a word?
Sure.
Thank you. Sorry I'm late, by the way. I was the chairperson on the school building committee when we built that building. The parking drop-off was there as part of the design. Now, it was, all of those uses that we created for that school were done with the intent that once the school, once we were done with the building and handed it over to the school, it would be a school management issue to do whatever the school system decided they wanted to do with the, with the use of the facility and the function of the facility. Once our, once our work was done, it became the responsibility of the school department. So if they, if they feel now that that was built in 2005, '06, and, you know, if they feel that, you know, at this point in time, that they want to change things, I don't have any issue with that.
Okay. Well, so we'll lose those parking spaces, so we'll send a letter to the school department that...
And if it turns out otherwise, we request them back.
They can take money. They want to have parking there after...
If we impark there after hours, or during football games, that type of thing.
If they want to put a sign up that parking will be allowed during non-school hours, we don't have a problem with that, if they want to put that in. They don't have to, but if they want to, they want them up, right?
Sounds fair.
Okay. Informal discuss, 7 Taylor Street.
Good. This is the post office.
This is post office.
Is it still a post office there?
Still is post office, although they're trying to legitimize it. I'm here representing a family of my son, my two brothers, Joey and Johnny, a few cousins only. We have children here, the name of Brendan Mahoney, who I think that's an excellent proposal for it, and we're trying to sell it, and we think his use would be after reaching the whole neighborhood. I think you've got a pitch as a, or a study for retail in the front of the business aspect. You can add to that, we will be doing an awful lot of the son of the line of gods that he specializes in. As an accessory use, he also runs a landscaping business, which is, pushes here in front of you, along with the issue of the fact that we're in front of an actual, oh, we have, not in front of, we have a farm. It's his intent to continue to operate his landscaping business, and is the issue of bulk storage, which most people would like to, at least on the corner, keep hidden from the front of the field. I have here a revision on the, only have, we have, I think there's enough for everybody. These are only rough ideas, we're here to get your input, because we want to make this more, rented one next to it. He proposes to build a garage or a structure in the back. He would like it to be about 3,000 to 4,000 square feet. He has three dump trucks, and it was my fault that I told Aaron that there were two, there were three. And he has trailers attached to them. And with that size building, he can have, park them in there, and they're visible to the public. What the public will be seeing is where he's selling out front, which will be the beautiful masonry where the gods, and some of the lighting that he does for all the, for the gods that consult those fireplaces in. We think his use fits within the zoning requirements as far as accessory use. We think by allowing him the ability to locate his garage there, and place a lot of view, it deals with the bulk issue more than having, rather than having trucks just sit out there. Even though the post office did it for years, they had six or seven vehicles sealed up at all times. And I think the only issue or lengthy key issue here is going to be is, how do we get what I consider a really good view, so nice just for having everybody, he has a good reputation, everything's whole and unique, and really nice. And that would go well with Brad's building, it would go well with the liquor store that's kept up pretty well. It wouldn't go well with the Urines's building, but like, there's nothing I can say about that.
I'm going to rub off. Rub off? Rub off. I'm going to rub off on him.
So what's the issue, though? Parking?
The parking... It was, yeah, to me.
Water resource district.
I know, it's a lot of...
Hockford district.
Word of a district.
Right. Say that again.
The building itself and the existing paving was put in in the late '50s. Nothing has changed since then.
So what's your impermeable, I know?
I think it's right about 29, 30 percent.
So what would the building put yet?
If he puts the building up, it would cost a lot. And I, it's really, he's adding just 4,000 square feet.
Have you considered permeable pavers?
No, the roof, the building makes it impermeable.
It's the brown.
Before we get to the building, what about the parking?
What's the limit on that, 32? 30. 30. Well, that's with the exceptions.
See, most of the time during the day, when he's up on his operating, the retail business, he's...
30 with the gosh.
What do you need to be, you've got, you've got people coming in and looking at your stuff. Correct.
That's the idea, yeah.
Yeah, well, so you need parking spaces for those, you don't have any here. What about the space for the post office? If it's still there, you need parking spaces for the post office. But he won't be going in and doing anything, the post office lease expires and they're gone. Oh, so there's kind of, so we're assuming there's no post office?
Right, right.
Post office is gone.
So would you take, would you take the post office building down?
That's your retail.
No, I think he forgot to mention that that would be the retail.
Oh, this is where the retail, okay, so this would be the...
So you got to, you got to find 10 percent.
You got to find 10 percent.
Is there a way on the...
Hang on a second, if I can ask. The building that's up right now is 1,500 square feet, correct?
Yeah, 1,500.
How big is the lot? The entire lot?
27,000, how, 23,000 square feet.
And 1,500 square feet doesn't sound like it's 30 percent. What is it?
No, it's not even close.
You got the paving that goes...
Oh, let's hang on about the paving. The building itself right now is taken up, what's, what is that, 5 percent?
About 5 percent now.
Okay, that's 5 percent. You put the, the other building in there, 3,000 square feet, is that what you're proposing now?
50 by 60.
Is that the 3,000?
Correct.
Okay, so now we've just gone from 5 to 15 percent, correct?
Correct.
That leaves you 15 percent is up to the 30, so you can add 4,500 square feet. Is that right? Of non-permeable?
You could, if you can...
Okay, so if you could turn around and find a place, a way to do that, take, collect the water off the roof and put it down into, I call them graves, that's what I call them, those, the half-moon tanks that go in and...
Underground retention system.
That's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Can you, well, let's just do a math, I mean, if we take out the buildings...
Yeah, take them out of the, off the...
If we take out the buildings, it gives you 3,900 square feet to work with for paving apart.
At least go way more than that.
Presently.
Presently.
So if we can turn around and, and again, use pavers that permit water to...
It's not like the impermeable, that's non-permeable.
That's right.
But you can't park on it, so...
You can park on pavers.
In permeable pavers, you can certainly park on.
Yeah, not, in our, our bylaws, there's a park on something that's impermeable, not permeable. You may correct with us, with your operate. The driveway aspects are not parking areas, they're just travel, they pick up sizable amount of hot water.
There you go.
What you need to do really is rather than just sketch this out, if you're going to do this when the retail, when they go out, you have to actually do a real plan. I understand. Right, and it's going to be up to us whether we give you the waiver up to 40 percent. You know, you're never going to make it, so we're obviously going to have to give you some sort of waiver as to how many square feet. If you draw this and have it professionally done, the way it's going to be built, and then ask us for the waiver, and you're going to use best management practices, so the water department will weigh in about how you're going to do the water retainage. I think we all want something to go here, I think we all want to revitalize the depot. I don't, what I'm trying to say is if you do the best you can with what you have there, you're probably going to be fine, you're still going to be close to under 40, I don't think anybody on this board is going to have a problem, it's a...
Where's the runoff go to off this problem?
It's a...
It's a binary use, as long as you can take, you can do the best you can with the water drainage going directly into dry wells, having some sort of detention area maybe incorporated with your landscaping there to rain gardens and that, for detention areas that sound like to ask for...
You're talking about when this new building gets erected, to take the water off the stormwater drainage capture?
No, 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 I'm talking this building. You're going to leave this building, right?
Catch whatever you can.
You're going to leave that one, I meant the new building.
What I'm saying is come before us with an engineer plan that shows everything, that shows how you do the drainage. I can't speak for the whole board, but I know that we're all, we're trying to revitalize the town, and we want to see more business down there. If all you're asking is, and you're doing the best you can, and you're doing the best with capturing the water, you're still lower than a lot of businesses up further on up that were grandfathered even higher than you. I think we'd all work with you to try to get everything you wanted in here, rather than try to take something out and do something. Know what I'm trying to say?
Yes, I understand clearly.
Yeah, so if he recharges all the runoff off the building...
He's done the best he can, and it's up to him.
Could be better than what you got now.
The idea is, is what does he actually have to have for parking spaces? That's the issue, and what's non-permeable?
But then, the parking spaces, we can relief onto.
Less, we can give him less.
The driveway as the parking spaces, just put a couple of, behind the building, put a couple of spaces to satisfy what you need for the employees here. You've done the best, you're going to do best management practices, and you could probably do a real nice job with the, with the rain gardens and everything and all the landscaping you're proposing anyway, it'd probably be a win-win situation.
Make it a saleable thing, so look what else we can do for you. Question being, you said you'd park the vehicles indoors?
The trucks.
That's what we, that's what it's planned as.
No, I've heard some plans previously, and I've seen some things, and I don't, you know, I want you to tell me that they are going to be parked indoors?
I want to be clear in front of...
That's the fairest way I'd like to go about it.
I want to work with you, I want to work with this town, and I want to beautify this, that area over there. And I think you've got the right person standing in front of you that's going to do it. If you came by my house, you'll see how clean as a whistle, okay? This area right here, you talk about water, and because we're in an aquifer, the paving here for me would be sufficient. My guys can pull in here, and they can go out this entrance, that's what's ideal about this location, because it's too tight in here to turn trailers around. But they can drive in this area, they can come out this way, and then they can back them in nice and tight behind the building so they're hidden, okay? And that's where the idea is, so I don't need to pave that. If I can put crushed stone there, and they can park around on top of crushed stone, that's permeable, okay? And then they're hidden behind this building, so the only thing anyone's going to see when this building gets erected is it's going to be, you see the nose of Ford, three Ford emblems on three Ford trucks.
We thought you wanted to put the trucks inside here.
Yeah.
That's what...
Thought they were going in the building.
Thought they were going inside the building.
That's what the documentation said.
All the trucks inside the building?
Inside the building. They don't want anything else on this.
No, it didn't say that. It didn't say that, but you profess to us that the trucks would be parked indoors.
It doesn't need to be.
I don't think they need to be all parked indoors, but again, and I don't really like the looks of Quonset Hudson, I mean personally, I don't like them, a decent fence, some arboretis to hide some of those things. And if you park them over there, I personally don't have a problem with it. But the 30,000 square foot building, and again, it's none of my business what you do in it, but don't tell me you're going to park the cars in, the vehicles in there, and then put them out somewhere else and do something, you know what I mean?
I'm not going to do that, okay?
So that's...
He's just told us he's going to park them outside.
That's fine.
To piggyback your point, I live in Groton, I don't know Littleton area very well, other than doing business in Littleton. And there's a liquor store here, okay, and I know that there's some apartment rentals that are in the backside. It's very expensive to replace hydraulic pumps or things on lawnmowers or what have you. So my idea is to fence in the entire area here, just have a gate here, and it'd be a screened-in fence so people can't see in, so it doesn't cause any distraction, and I keep people out, and I keep it clean and neat, that's the idea.
And so those sightlines from the street?
That's correct. So the only sightline you would see is the gates, but the gates, these type of, you can buy the chain fences that have a nice colored hunter green that's meshed through, so it kind of blends in with nature around you. So that's the idea, so I can box the whole area in. So I'm not going to see the trucks. They're going to be hidden behind this building here, I'm only going to see the nose of them, that's the idea.
So wait, does the truck have to be on impermeable?
It's parked.
Trailers don't.
Truck does, trailer does.
You'd have to pay them.
The truck should be something permeable.
Only the trailer, that's the trailer.
Yeah, the truck.
No, 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 the safest you can park is trucks right here.
I forgot, is that vacant lot, is that...
Well, if you park the trucks there, yeah.
Which way'd you say?
Residing there, someone lives here. This may be the water department.
If the board's okay with me parking the trucks there, I'll be right now. I'd rather pay it because it's clean and neat, and then my trucks, because the guys have to wash the trucks every other day, because I don't like anything dirty, you get one chance in life to make a first impression when you pull up someone's house. So my trucks are clean.
To make a good first impression.
Well, that's right.
Why don't you do the calculations, see where your file numbers are and stuff like that, and we'll go and work with you for that. This is the best way.
Sounds like a good idea.
Who's your butter here, is this the water department lot?
No, the water department is up in there.
Right, so it's right here, whereas the next one where someone lives at, yeah, this one, your butter.
Right here, and what is right here, so if you come in from the, this is from Taylor Street.
Right, right, I'm wondering who is the butter, is that...
George Sanderson.
No. It says that, but that, they own the land.
Lewisian McNiff?
That's what I thought, it's the water department.
That was donated by Mrs. Statch.
Right, so it's the water department, and someone else resides here, this house here.
Which one, how one are you pointing at here?
Says Sanderson, that's actually the town of Littleton.
Okay.
Here.
So are we...
That's all I'm thinking.
This is a water department. Did we get a good...
Did we get a good...
So satisfied?
Do you have a good idea or not?
Yes.
Okay, so...
So do you need, do you need a 3,000 foot building?
Fifty by sixty is a perfect size building for me to be able to set up a workbench inside, to store. I have, I only own one sander, stainless steel sander, I can put the sander inside, I can put the five plows inside, so I can keep everything out of the elements, that's the idea.
Just capture...
If you keep things outside, it gets rusty, and then I got to buy a new stuff, so...
Does this fall into the accessory dwelling, the size? This is commercial, it doesn't have anything to do with accessory...
Capture the runoff.
Right, good.
Do the best you can with the best, like I said, the main guy.
Capture the runoff on the roof here.
Do you make pizza things like this? Does he make pizza ovens like this?
We just, that's something new, it's hot now, we're getting requests for it.
Of course, it's got a fire in it, it's got to be hot.
Come before us with the best you can do with the work, and we'll be back.
Thank you all for your time.
Great, well, thank you. Hope this works out.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's a tough lot.
529 King Street. Site modification, Act Three, Jack's Cafe.
Here we are.
Okay. What are you here to tell us now?
Well, I'm Virginia Wood of Gallery 529, I own the property at 529 King Street. This is Gwen Vivian of Act Three Restaurant, one of the Act Three Jack's Cafe. We were enacted for 17 and a half years, and we're planning to move in with Virginia at 529 King Street and run the combination, Gallery Restaurants and Mud Music Center. And from the gallery's perspective, we're going to be offering art classes for adult and children. We're going to have artists renting the space from us, where they'll show their art wear and sell it. And we're also going to have consignment artwork, gifts and jewelry and all kinds of handmade beauty. And I have a couple of artists here this evening. Mary Lou Eshelman is one of our partners, and Jessica Perry is a Weaver.
So when are this classes going to be, and when is the food going to be? Is it going to be night and day?
The classes for the children will be after-school classes, and the entrance will be in the front side entrance, closest to the street there. And so the buses can drop the kids off, and if necessary, we'll have a homework club there for the kids. And then the art classes would take place from 3:30 until 5:00. And then the adult classes were planning on in the evening, from, I don't know, 6:00 to 8:00, so 7:00 to 9:00. So that would be consistent with one of the restaurants.
So we are right, so it's going to be about, so how many seats rest were there, you had proposed?
We're planning to have about 30 seats in the front sunroom where the windows are, because we all got the little burger and piano and musical performance. About 30 seats in the front, about another 20 seats in the front, about 50 seats altogether in general. Next summer, we'll think about the patio and putting any fencing around that, but we're not planning on thinking about the patio spreadway.
So have you done a plan that shows us seating, parking?
Yes, you have all that.
That was from last meeting?
Yes, did I need to resubmit? The seating itself, I have an architect drawing up a plan for me right now of exactly where the table and others are going to be.
Okay, I think you were waiting for two pieces of information, one that they just gave you is the number of seats in the restaurant. You can go, if you can run with 50, that, the current parking on the site, there is enough according to zoning. The second piece of information was how they were going to access for emergency vehicles, and the access to the driveway, the...
Be able to come in and go out the side.
That was the part I'm talking about, moving the large stones.
Yeah, and that's just an agreement with Roger and I, that's what I'm...
And you're going to actually still have the parking, you need the parking in the back, isn't that the extra parking in the back?
What extra parking?
Come to...
The same point, if they, if you go with the 50 seats and the uses that they have proposed, zoning says that she doesn't need those spaces in back.
What about the classrooms? How are you going to address the issue of people that are going to be in the classrooms while the cafes are open? You need more parking.
Well, but you look at the number, and it works, because they've only got 50 seats instead of the 99 that were on the prior restaurant.
Yeah.
That's the difference.
So it does work with overlapping.
Not saying there won't be an overflow parking issue that she's going to have to deal with, but according to zoning, it meets the zoning.
I mean, we want to be able to pack in as many customers as we potentially can, so if we have a parking issue with parking, and people can't park, they're not going to stop and visit us, so, and that's, that's why Roger is so wonderful, because he's there to, if you need more parking, then...
Well, I just want to make sure that you have it in place in the event that you do need it, you know? Hopefully you do need it, that's the point.
Yeah, across the street from you, there's the title house that no one uses.
Right.
You can't, she has to be able to control the parking.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, I mean, that's something good.
So now we know, so you didn't take the rocks out, so we're good with that. Good, we're going to take a leap of faith, and it's just good with parking. What else does she need from us?
Just a vote to approve the site plan with those conditions.
Anybody have any issues?
Not, not from here, but have you checked with Board of Health, because just I think the risk...
Come on, come on, that's not, that's not, that's not our issue, it's Board of Health's issue.
It isn't our concern, but I know there has been an issue before, last round.
From Gallery 529's perspective, an artist cooperative, I have not checked with the Board of Health. Gwen will absolutely have to check with the Board of Health from the restaurant perspective. She's got all kinds of hoops that she still needs to jump through, so... I filed my liquor license application, and the next thing I have to do is get the DVA with the town.
It's quite true, it is our purview, but I'm just trying to make sure you don't get caught in a funny situation and have to come back.
Yeah, no, I'm just kidding.
Can we get on with our business?
Yeah.
There's nothing wrong with mentioning other boards and concerns and issues.
Depends on what your history is with mentioning other boards.
All right, I want to take a motion to approve this modified site plan as presented to us.
Second.
If it moves all in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who made the motion for that? I think I did.
Okay.
You made the second.
Seven thirty, we have a meeting with the selectmen about master plan steering committee.
Here I am, I'm meeting with you tonight in the court of the selectmen Monday night. And what we want to do is move ahead with the master plan update process. What we told town meeting and getting them to approve the first $100,000 was that there would be a master plan steering committee to work with, with the planning board on the process. So the next step is to actually establish that committee. And I had sent a memo to you, it's just two pages that briefly outlines some of the issues here, but as far as establishing that town board goes, in Littleton, there are two ways to do it. One is a by-voted town meeting, which we typically reserve just for a permanent board. The second is a voted board of selectmen, which is how we establish all the study committees and committees of indefinite term. We've got a couple of dozen of them right now, you know, you're in a recording committee, and all of them, so... But, so the thought is that if by, on your recommendation from the planning board to the selectmen, the board of selectmen could vote to establish a master plan steering committee that would then be composed of whatever, you know, whatever you'd like. And so we're here to talk about what, you know, what do you think's reasonable for that? And I had three suggestions that are outlined here. Wait, let me just back up, that the charge of the committee would be, what I'm recommending, it would be to essentially do it to assist the planning board in your carrying out your function of adopting master plan. The statute says it's, you know, a majority of the planning board is, a vote of a majority of the planning board is needed to adopt a plan or update a plan. So ultimately, at the end of the day, it's your board voting on a plan. But to get us to that point, because the master plan involves a lot of elements that are other people's stuff, you're talking about, you know, the things that other boards do, well, we've got housing, economic development, we've got infrastructure, land uses, open space, recreation, a whole menu of things that include not only the things that you do, but the things that other boards do. So the thought is that there needs to be broad representation from, and I'm suggesting three areas. One is the planning board itself, that you ought to decide what planning board representation could be. You could have all five of you on it, you could have, you could have fewer than five. And if it's going to be fewer, I'd suggest it be less than a quorum, so that we don't have to post every master plan update meeting also as a planning board meeting in case three of you are there and decide something else. So let's, let's say, you know, one or two planning board members as a suggestion. The next thing would be to have representation from other town boards. When I, just to account of how many boards there are that deal with issues that are reflected in the planning board, in the, in the master plan, there are a lot, you know, there are, you know, dozens. And so I think what we may want to do is to just put out a blanket invitation to those, to those other boards whose work is reflected in the elements of the master plan, and see who's interested. You know, for facilities, well, let me see, I think it would be critical to have somebody from the selectmen, light and water, planning board, and whoever, and frankly, whoever else wants to invest the time and interest in it. When you get to each of the elements, though, it's that there will be plenty of time, you know, if it's a conservation thing, there will be the conservation commission, and, you know, the open space update committee, and the groups that are concerned about that. So no one's going to be left out of the process. It's going to be a very inclusive process, because actually, one of the functions of the master plan is to, it says in the statute, is to conduct and interact in public process to determine community values and goals. So that's, you know, so it's going to be, by the time we bring a consultant on board and to lead the project, there'll be plenty of ways to get folks involved. So planning board, other town boards, and then the third is the community at large. I think it would be important to have folks who are not aligned, or not there because they're on a committee, but because they're members of the community. So, so if you've got those three groups represented, then what you want to do is to have a number that you can, a number of permanent members of your, a number of members of your committee, so that you're able to get it formed and able to function. And while I know some communities have had over 20 members of a master plan update committee, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend that. I think if we can, maybe, maybe 11, maybe somewhere between 11 and 15, I don't quite know what it is, but I think it would, it would be more in that category than, than two dozen. I, my suggestion would be for us to test what it, what the number should be. Let's, let's agree that there should be a master plan steering committee, agree that there's some representation from the planning board, you tell us, that there should be some representation from affected committees and from the community at large, and then what we do is we advertise. And then what we do is we advertise, it's a full week period in the selectance policy, so let's say if the board voted on Monday night to establish the committee, it would be, you know, a month from now that, that folks would, would have to apply, and then we can see who applies, then we can manage. And we do this a lot with the committees of indefinite term. Sometimes you pick the size of the committee depending upon how many applicants you have. If we have so many, if we get, if we only get, you know, fifteen applicants, then maybe, and it reflects a broad cross-section, well, maybe you just appoint those people or you appoint how it goes. But if we get dozens and dozens of applicants, then we'll have to.
Whittle down.
You know, whittle it down. But in order to move ahead, I think it would be important to reach agreement that the charge of the committee is to assist you, that the, carrying out your function, that the composition would be planning board, other town boards, and the general public, I think, I think that would, that would, that would work. With the size of the committee to be determined, not right now, but later, depending upon applications. The last thing I wanted to mention is administrative support, which I think is critical to the success, even in the short term of this undertaking. There's a hundred thousand dollars that's been appropriated for the project. We think, you know, the project is, could be somewhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred and fifty ultimately in hiring a consultant, depending upon if you go outside or if we say hired with a, with a regional planning agency, disclosure of the vice president of MAPC. I will, I will recuse, if, if a contract ever comes before MAPC, I will recuse myself there, but I will participate here on, on, in making, participating in the discussion and making recommendations. So Bonnie and Maren and I huddled on what, what might be a reasonable dollar figure to, to program, and we've come up with seventy-five hundred dollars as a working number for, we're gonna need some professional staff support and clerical support, some combination. We're not sure what, in the meeting minutes, is some clerical functions to do, to the extent that it's procurement and, and what the committee's doing is crafting a request for proposals and scope of services. You'll have the help of the finance team anyway, because Bonnie's the chief procurement officer and she works with, with each of you, each of the agencies that makes procurements. But in this case, that I think we have to allow that there's gonna be some additional hours that we are all gonna wanna get from there and then we ought to make sure the money's there and we can take it out of here. The other is that there'll be some need for clerical support as well, attending the meeting, taking the meeting minutes and so on. And we think that the seventy-five hundred would allow you to get ten, ten to fifteen hours per month from both Maren and from a clerical person, if that's the mix. I mean, we're not quite sure how much of Maren's time might be needed, but for planning purposes, we wanted to pick a number and say that this is, this is how we move forward. So that, so that's basically the plan to, to, to be able to, to move ahead.
How long is it supposed to run for?
It'll, the, it'll take you to get a, well, the initial task of coming up with a request for proposals, the first hurdle is to go and get more money from town meeting, frankly, and, and the way that we, because we know that we're not gonna be able to get it done for a hundred thousand dollars. So the first task is, is doing.
Spend money to try and get more money?
That's what we call town meeting.
That's how it works.
This is the government, that's where it works.
That we, that it was, the total, the total price tag could ultimately be two fifty. And if so, the hundred thousand was the down payment on, on that process. To do a master plan probably takes a couple of years. Takes a couple of years. And to do this first part, it will take some number of months, it will, to, six months, I, I think is, is a non-unreasonable number for the first phase of having, you know, starting assembling the committee, getting together the procurement, having discussions about what that, what the scope of services is gonna be, and even to reach the point that you can then see what's the additional number that you want to go and get from town.
So if we start this steering committee, it really should be a steering committee that keeps going, because once, once you start.
It should be in place for a couple of years.
Yeah, once you get the people involved, have them start, and I think you're right, we do two people from each board, selectmen too, so we don't have to post it, so they can have meetings outside of the planning board meetings, outside the selectmen.
Yeah, we'll post it as a, as a steering committee meeting.
So we'll, so we'll suggest to you that we, that we'll pick two people, we'll pick three people, open it up to the other boards for somebody that's gonna be on long-term.
Yeah.
I mean, to the, probably each of the other boards involved, the health, the Board of Health, conservation.
Maybe one person from those boards.
From housing, maybe one person from those. And find out who's interested in doing it. And start with the R five, R P.
Scope of services.
And let that board keep going and start meeting with the different boards and see what, how they want to scope and how they want to shape it. And it's probably gonna take a year before, I mean, you know.
Yeah, as a practical matter, I think that if there are any supplemental funding that's needed, it would, I think it's unlikely that we would be ready, let's say it's almost impossible that we'll be ready for fall special town meetings. We're just, we're just crunching some numbers of what the timetable would look like. The warrant would close in, in the end of September for the, for a November town meeting. We're not gonna be ready to say, gee, we need another hundred fifty thousand. We will be ready and we can have it considered in the annual budgeting process, the annual capital process to be ready for May town meeting. So we won't, we won't miss a beat, though, because there's still, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, even in crafting the scope, because there's a lot of decisions that get made about, you know, what are you gonna do?
So do you want us to, we'll send you a letter back that this is how we want to proceed?
Yeah.
And then you're gonna vote on it?
On Monday, you could vote on it on Monday and to get the ball rolling, to, to at least then sending the invitation out to the boards and to the general public that, you know, you're gonna fly by in the middle of August, maybe.
So two from our board, I'd, I'd like to nominate Peter Scott to be the selectman's representative for it.
Selectmen's? I'd like to, I'd like to nominate Mark Martinari to be the planning boards.
No, I'd like Peter to do it. I think Peter and Richard should, should.
I nominate you. You second that?
No.
Well, is that secondary to?
I don't have the time to put it to, I personally just don't have the time to, to, to address it.
We'll find two, we'll.
Okay, yeah.
I think it's well thought, thought out, and you tried, you want to be inclusive, and I think that's the main concern, that does that.
Yeah, and you can, you know, you can, we won't actually be having a meeting in this committee until probably the beginning of September because if the, if there's a month of an application period and the appointments would get made, you, you know, you, I think you, I think you would probably want to, we would have your, your board participating in the, the feedback from your board on who the appointment should be.
Maybe by September, I think that's better. All right, so we'll, we will send you a letter that that's how we want to proceed.
Do we want to vote on this?
We do want to vote on this.
We can, we can certainly say that there'll be two members, I know I, I would be interested in, in sitting on that committee. Could I ask you, Keith, how this model that you just described matches other models of other towns that have approached this?
Well, I, it's, it's pretty close that we're, the only difference might be in some communities that they, that they actually bring their master plan to town meeting to be adopted. I think legally it only requires a vote of the planning board, I guess that's almost a business decision you make later, how much buy-in you want. Do we love the plan so much, is there so much community invested, that you want to bring, you know, an article with ten principles or something to, to get a, a vote of support from town meetings?
I mean, fifteen, eighteen years ago, we did it the first time, this is sort of how we went down the same road. Steering committee with the selection, you know, we hired the consultants, we did the, we had the public forums, the public meetings, and so we're pretty much.
You know, it is a planning process, but it's so critical that the planning initiatives that we, that we've done, even though a number of them have been great and produced results, the Littleton Common zoning, I think is the standout one. Each, each one, though, is, it's a standalone project, and there are so many things that overlap that if you decide to do something here, what are you gonna do there? It's really the, the master plan and the process that, that you reach the, the, the mix that's essential for.
Yeah, it's not a great place, you want buy-in from everyone, so you need participation.
Mark, you're gonna, you're gonna be the other member, right?
No, I didn't say that. I'm gonna, I had to take a motion to send a letter to the selectmen that the planning board wants to move forward with the master plan by using a steering committee, two members from the selectmen, two members from the planning board, and to be determined from all the other boards in town and interested citizens. And that work. What?
Why are we two?
Two from each board.
Two from this board, two from the selectmen.
The selectmen, so we don't have a quorum.
And then the rest of the boards.
And the rest will be one, probably.
Probably one from a selected member.
Then the general public also. Offering move.
But that's, we're endorsing the, what's been submitted to us, which seems well thought out.
So I, in addition to that, I think that we, we need to agree that, to revisit the master plan and incorporate that into our vote and, and that we're gonna determine the size of the committee later, incorporate that into our vote.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Say aye.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay, we have on eight o'clock. All right, some photographs goes. Goldsmith Street, you're familiar with custom clothes and common mixed-use special permit.
Before you continue, I am related to Matthew Field's wife, she is my sister. I have no financial interest in this building or any properties that the Fields presently or future leave alone. Is that clear?
Does the board have any problem with Mr. Scott staying on the board, or would you rather him recuse himself?
I have no problem with Mr. Scott staying on the board.
You're related to who?
Matthew Field, his wife is my sister Sheila.
His wife is your sister?
It's my sister. Her mother and my mother are both mothers.
Do you have a problem with him staying on the board? Do I have a problem? I mean.
I mean, just for this.
I don't personally, but you realize that's like massive conflict of interest, right? You're gonna rule on a.
If I don't like what he says, I say no, I don't. Him and I fight more than my sister and I do.
It's up to him.
But I mean, it's up to you.
It's clean or not.
It is not a conflict of interest if he makes his declaration and the rest of us agree that that's okay.
I don't have a problem with.
You serious?
Yes.
Wow, Richard, you should do some studying, buddy, that's an inherent conflict of interest, you can't mitigate that. I understand conflict, conflict of interest law very well.
Okay. I'm not telling you to step down, you do it on your own fruition, but that's.
I believe I have an open mind for no matter who's in front of me. But I just wanted it known that his wife is my sister, a friend and a relative, blood even.
Is he a friend?
Sometimes.
I don't have a problem with Peter.
And I have the same assurance that Jerry does, but I think it's up to him.
I think it's up to Peter. I don't, I don't have a problem that if you don't step down, so.
Okay, let's move on to the next step of this decision.
Okay, so why don't you tell us what you're doing? Haven't gone through that.
I'm Cheryl Gould, as you know, this is Matt Billie, application comes to town in March of two thousand and eight. Matt has purchased the property, which I call the greenhouse, it's on Goldsmith Street, and it is sort of a boxy-looking house in front, and then a long row building that runs down the side and that's.
Cormier's old house. Cormier.
Cormier's old house, it's how, you know it, I know it, it's visiting age.
Phyllis's house.
I have quarters right now. Anyway, Matt had this idea, and he approached it with the Housing Authority, that the area is prime for housing, especially walk-to-downtown kind of housing for the empty nesters and the elderly. And we approached the Housing Authority, and his initial idea was to make the units totally available to the Housing Authority in Littleton. I think the new, the new director of the Housing Authority is here, and we had an informal discussion with her, and financially, the economics don't work for it to be totally dedicated that way, so we looked at it other ways. And right now, what he's looking at is a number of residential units on the site. We'd like to keep them as rental units for downtown proximity and for that population of little, humbled, empty nesters or singles or even young folks that want to be in town, that need to be in town, that would be an affordable housing opportunity for them, nowhere near what Omni is providing down at the other end of town. And ideally, one, as the bylaw allows in the mixed-use overlay district, studio one and two beds, so you're not gonna attract large families. They won't really be conducive to large families. And I think Matt is offering and would negotiate with the town, and maybe as a condition of the permit, to allocate maybe twenty or twenty-five percent of the units for affordable, as that term is defined by BHCD. It doesn't have to be done as affordable, you can do it as a condition of the permit. And once done, then that allows all of the units down there to be added to the SHI, which as you know, we have met with Omni if they build, and we are pretty secure that that will last for ten more years. But after that, we need to do more affirmative things to make sure we stay there. So with that, I think I'm gonna turn it over to Matt and Jonathan, because I know you're dying to know how many units and what they're gonna look like, and then I'll take it back.
Okay, you mentioned mixed use, this is dwellings over commercial retail area?
No, that's not the proposal, and we can talk more about it after they present.
I'm Matthew Field, and what we're proposing to do is to, this is the green building that's the office structure now and the home that's right there. What we're planning to do is to add an existing floor to this and build this building back here. And we're proposing twenty-four units to meet, to meet the handicapped and sprinkler and elevator and open it up to rental units and go from there.
Can you take the house down?
Yes.
How many parking lots is the?
Right now, we have thirty-one, but we have additional area over here if we need to put more parking in there.
And you have room for septic?
I'm sorry?
Septic, you got room for septic on that?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
And, and I have the engineer here to talk about that as well.
So one and a half times twenty-four is thirty-six.
Yeah. We can accommodate thirty-six parking, but we wanted to keep some more. Thirty-four? Yeah. All right. We wanted to keep some green here and green out in the front and go from there.
So you had thirty-four?
We can, yeah.
Close enough to come to work. What about the mixed use?
So I'd like to speak to that, and I think it's, I think it's something this town has struggled with, I've struggled with it as someone who does a lot of real estate in this town. We're not Charles Street in Boston, and the idea of putting apartments over retail, in my experience, and this isn't anything I have statistics on, just doesn't work. Mine used to be retail upstairs, and there's no way I would want kids stomping around over a law office. And I know there are a lot of buildings like that, you wouldn't want them upstairs over the liquor store, you wouldn't want them upstairs over a nail salon. So I don't think that this site, or specifically this town, is really conducive to the mixed use up, over and under. Your bylaw reads that you allowed for mixed use to be in the overlay district in the Village Common, and it says dwelling units shall be allowed on ground floors as follows, and then it goes on to say a number of things, but one of the criterias, the planning board can determine that streetfront residential uses will not have an adverse impact on the continuity of the commercial streetfront uses in the, in the zone, and where such streetfront residential uses will not be adversely affected by proximity to the adjacent commercial uses. I believe that we can, that you can use that bylaw to allow this not to contain the mixed use component, and the reality of the economics today is that this project can't be built dedicating some ground floor units to a miracle. It's in a location off the side street, it's not downtown frontage, it's, retail is, is completely dead right now. I mean, the slowness of the Sam Park development is a testament to that, retail is not renting right now. And, and we have a bunch of empty office buildings and a bunch of empty office space, but what we need and we don't have is a bunch of people who want to stay in Littleton who can't afford to on long waiting lists for housing.
But one hearing is that you're saying we can use the mixed use bylaw to circumvent mixed use?
Yes, I am.
No, it's clear in the bylaw that we can amend that at this board if we wanted to. It's not an overlay. It's the actual zone.
It's the actual Village Common.
It's a zone. It's a zone. We changed the zoning for that area.
What's your issue?
There's no...
Pardon me?
What's your issue?
I think he's saying that the intent of the mixed use bylaw is that you combine commercial and residential in the same building. You have commercial downstairs and...
You don't have to.
No.
I'm saying you don't have to do that.
Yeah, or you said, you thought we were saying that?
No, I think Mr. MacGyver was leading to that question.
But you're making the argument you can use the mixed use bylaw to not have mixed use, which sounds contradictory.
This is the Village Common bylaw, which allows for mixed use. It doesn't require mixed use. So we could...
It's an option. You don't have to use the option. You wanna put 24 units in, put them in.
All business or mixed.
I'm in.
What if we didn't tie it on the line that it's allowed as a mixed use? What she's asking is whether it's mixed use. So are we... The only issue really for us is whether or not we...
But the intent was to be able to allow a diversity of mixed uses downtown, not allow something like this to come in where it makes sense to put it in.
Maybe not, Mr. County, because as Mr. Crowley said, the intent was to allow a diversity of mixed uses downtown, not necessarily all of them in the same building.
Correct.
Although that option was provided in the bylaw.
Exactly.
And I think that's what Mr. Crowley...
And I don't think you need anything special from us to do that. I think you have that by right.
Well, then we'd like... I mean, that's why we're here informally, and if the board concurs, we'll bring in formal...
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't agree with Mrs. Crowley, but I don't have a problem with the fact that if you wanna go under the mixed use and not use the mixed use, the board has the right to look at this individual project.
Semantics.
That's what we're requesting.
Right. That's what I agree with that.
And I don't care how you get there.
Yeah.
I think it's a good... Personally, I think it's a great project. I know that it was commented on to me that there may not be a very lengthy waiting list for the subsidized housing right now, but I know from my experience in the office how many clients come in all the time with this need that have no option in Littleton that's affordable.
But you're only gonna designate a portion as affordable.
I'm not just talking clients come in with an affordability need. Clients who are empty nesters who want to stay in Littleton cannot find a place to live that will enable them to walk to downtown.
Now, these are all gonna be self-contained units, correct?
Yes, sir.
They're gonna all have their own separate eating. They're all, I mean, they're all on their own.
It's not gonna be like a few other issues we've had in town where it's a community kitchen.
These will be brand-new.
Just like the small standalone apartments.
Yes, sir.
I don't...
This is, I think this is great. This is another success, demonstration of the success of that Village Common bylaw change.
Mr. Scott?
I got nothing to say.
Good man.
Are you happy?
The concept of having this type of housing is fine with me. It just seems rather strange to invoke a part on mixed use that... I'm surprised you have to rely upon the mixed use.
No, just read the bylaw. She doesn't need to. She has the right to do either or without any special dispensation from us.
With due respect to both of you, I have to say, Mr. MacGyver, I was not 100% convinced that the bylaw reads only one way. I interpreted it as you did as well, that there was a mixed use, and I was looking for an escape in that special apartment granting authority to get out of it. So I read it like you did, but I think the bylaw, I'm convinced after reading it and rereading it, that the bylaw permits this, as you say. You don't have to do it. You have the option of doing it.
Exactly.
If it was the intent to make the zone friendly.
In all the discussions we had with MIPC as we were developing that special bylaw, those were the intentions and those were the, and that was the ultimate goal.
And we will be then with permanent applications.
Mary, I mean, do you know of any decision by this board that would lead us to believe it was being interpreted another way?
This is the first time the bylaws been invoked.
So we can set precedent. Awesome.
You can interpret and...
Well, actually, it's not. The commercial building that was built next to the auto dealership was built as sole business use, not mixed use.
This is the first residential use for...
Correct. So that did not ask for a special exemption not to include residential component.
They didn't come and ask us if they could...
Right.
Because they had the right to do one or the other.
But that's not part of the mixed use.
I think we all agree that this is, we can waive the commercial components.
That section is part of the Village Common.
But not the mixed use part.
Especially given the fact that there really isn't any commercial. There's three or four houses that go after it that are still commercial and they're residential too, so it fits more in the neighborhood than putting like a paint store in there or something like that when the next house next door is residential anyway. I think that would be our argument.
Somebody sold coffee out of one of those apartments.
Your comment had a ton of counsel.
It would be okay.
Yeah.
Somebody will make coffee in one of the apartments.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great news, Matt. Thanks.
Thank you. Have a great night. Thank you. Thank you for coming. So we're behind. Public hearing, Aquaford District, special permit, Russell Street, 119 Concord Property Retail Site, public hearing setback requirements, permit, Russell Street, 119.
Oh, yeah.
Sit up right here.
All right. This is a public hearing for the Aquaford District, special permit setback, special permit, Russell Street at Route 119. Town of Littleton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, July 10, 2012, at 8:00 p.m., Room 103 of Town Hall, 37 Shattuck Street, to consider the application for special permits pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A in the Code of Town of Littleton Zoning. The application is for an Aquafer and Water Resource District special permit under Sections 173 through 61 through 173 through 64, and an intensity of use scheduled special permit to allow a reduced building setback under Section 17331 of the Code of Town of Littleton Zoning. Property location is Russell Street at Great Road. Assessors map R-18 parcel 2-1, applicant Concord Property Management. The applicant is seeking approvals for a development of 7,400 square feet of new retail space and associated site improvements. The applicants are, one, in Aquafer and Water Resource District special permit to allow 17.2% impervious, and, two, a setback special permit to all the buildings to be set back 50 feet from Russell Street. Application and plans can be viewed at the planning board and the town clerk's office during their business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. Town of Littleton does not discriminate on the basis of disability. Further, aside translation of this hearing will be provided for the hearing impaired upon request by contacting the planning board office at 978-540-2425 one week prior to the meeting date. Thank you.
They need one more special permit, correct, Marlon?
Right.
They need a special permit for retail through the overlay district.
Yes.
So you're gonna... We can still open it and continue it, but you do need to apply for that as well.
Yes, that's correct. That's the master plan development special permit.
Permit for the overlay district, yeah.
I'm William Hall with Stampstein McNary, and I'm representing Concord Property Management on this site plan. And as you said, we do need to apply for that special permit to retail there. But that said, this is our proposal. The two buildings, one is 3,500 square feet, the other is 3,900 square feet, and the parking lot, we're proposing 37 spaces. And if we did all retail, it would require 50 spaces, so we'd be asking for a reduction in that as well for the intensity. This green is the open space with this tan being our storm water management system. So we have a couple catch basins here that are catching all the runoff from the parking lot. It's getting pretreated outside the 100-foot buffer zone and infiltrating in this basin, which a portion of is within the buffer zone. This is our wetland line back here and our mitigation. We could allow that to naturalize. And we got review from the water department on the storm water. They didn't have any issues with that. We went before conservation, and the plan will have to have adjustments per conservation. They don't like the proximity of the wetlands. And the fire department, we will be putting in fire hydrants as needed. They requested at the entrance, so we will be doing that. And they had an issue with the circulation, and we're gonna explore our options for the circulation as well to see possibly an easement to get around. We'll work with that as well.
And the police department concerned?
The police department could not comment until they knew what was going into the buildings.
Mm-hmm.
So that is something that we have to resolve.
So it's the frequency of use, et cetera, which maybe is what they're thinking of in travel.
Whatever it is, they determine to put in.
Yes.
Do you know, are you...
Yeah, I read it.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but you'd like to leave your options open for what you want to put in there?
Yeah, we don't have any leases at this point, but what we have is the project across the street that has other retailers that can't go into that project who would be interested potentially in coming in because, you know, they can't put multiple coffee shops that compete in that particular development. So, you know, it's a logical place. It's zoned in the Village Overlay District. We've kind of contemplated that there would be something like this there, and we've got the office building next door, and our thought is that this is a good compatible use with what's going on in the general area, and it was kind of laid out accordingly.
Yeah, and the architecture looks like sort of a standard Walgreens drugstore. It's like Model A of Walgreens almost.
I mean, it looks like the hotel that's gonna go across the street.
Yeah, it looks a little bit like the Fargo of type of architecture. Huge.
One that you were so ecstatic about last time.
Oh, it just houses, well, that's a fit with the residential area.
What about the...
We have our patents.
Yeah, the TV does have.
No, I don't have the architecture. I have a little bit bigger view of this.
So the project owns that whole lot, doesn't it? Does it not?
That's correct.
Yes.
And so you won't be building on the rest of the lot, will you?
No.
This area?
All wetlands.
This is all wetlands.
Just to make it clear for the audience.
Yes, this is in overview of the lot, so this is Great Road here, and this is the development next door, and this is our impact that we have in that lot.
I think it's a great use. However, I agree with Don that our intent for this overlay is to hit some local architectural elements that fit into the local neighborhood, peak roofs, fibered wood, you know, wood-type materials. You're right across the street from the houses, so the thing to do is look across the street and see the kinds of materials you have around you. Littleton is not a brick and mortar and plaster type of community. We're an old-fashioned wood clapbered peak roof type town.
Do you think the building next to that Moran just put up for the detailing?
That's a great example.
Because you think, I think that fits in nicely.
Of what we're looking for.
That type of idea.
This thing has a huge facade, which, you know, is typical of a Walgreens.
Do you know the building that Pete was talking about? There's a car dealership east of the common.
I don't like the way you framed the roof.
Just before the car dealership is this pink roof building that now has three retail stores in the front.
Yeah, has a variety of friends across from Don.
That was built under the new zoning bylaws, and that's the type of architectural detail we were hoping to achieve throughout the 119 corridor.
My name is Bruce Gurrell. I've been taking around here for a lot of years and built 119 Russell Street. And when we built that, we were sympathetic to that aspect. That building is a 43,000-foot building, and it was, we pioneered with that. It was one of the first multi-tended buildings in the whole corridor, and we put soap roofs in on that building. The soap roofs on that building are somewhat of a detriment to leasing the space. In fact, the space that's currently vacant in there is all of the soap roof spaces, because you don't have clear glass line. But that being the case, we understand that. And one of the points that I'd like to make is that we feel that this is really a low impact to the site. In 1989, we came in with a plan to build another 43,000-foot building on this site, and it fit, and the land was dry. And between 1989 and now, with what's been done on 495 and on 119 and even the sidewalk easements we've given, and the way the brick goes down through, this is what we're down to for, you know, a limit of development. So that's somewhat what dictated the size of these, and I think we'll take, you know, obviously take your residential comments into consideration. The one thing we would like to do is to make sure that this reads commercial to the people who are coming there commercially.
Yeah, the interior can be steel frame and square box, so long as from the outside you have, you know, the appearances, not just stuck on, but the visual depth and appearances of, you know, kinds of materials you find in Littleton.
What are you gonna do with the space that's not usable? Are you going to...
Not use it.
Would you donate it to the town? I mean...
Well, it's by the wetlands.
I know, but there is a little bit of area. We are gonna be putting sidewalk in over there.
Well, you know, we've actually been, there are, you know, people who would like to see a cell tower on the site. They approached us in the past. There are...
We would.
No, I'm just saying that that, the amount of space that's left is very limited. That's the thing. I mean, you can mow it and run around on it, but I don't think you'll ever see anything built there.
So the first thing you're asking is a waiver from a 150-foot front, a 100-foot setback for the front. Having put that picture up there now, is there any thought to put the buildings, you own the parking lot next to it?
Right.
Putting the buildings back there in the parking lot, in the existing parking lot for the building next door, so that they're still 150 feet back, they're a bit more from the residential, and maybe putting a parking lot out front there?
Oh, Mark, we're trying to keep parking lots out back, not out front. That's about it.
Well, wait a second. They're asking for a waiver for buildings 150, 100 feet forward.
Closer. Yeah, but that sort of makes sense, because there's a sensitive area back there.
Closer to the street is a more village-type of concept. That's what we were questioning in our overlay.
But they're not allowed there at 150 feet. They're asking for a waiver. All I'm asking is, if we're thinking about it and we're thinking outside the box, why not put the buildings back there with arcades way over that?
We currently have a septic system, but this building, we had to rebuild it. The septic system, this building is in this whole area here.
What is the setback granted for the self-storage facility? What is that down? Is that down to 60 feet? Wasn't it granted? They were at 100. We granted them 80. They widened the road a little bit, and didn't you mention that it would be 60? You gave them, it went down to 60. They asked for 80, and you gave them 60? Yeah, I think, could you do it at 60 instead of 50? Go back 60 feet?
No, they have problems because they have wetlands behind it.
The problem with that extra 10 feet meters of wetlands in the space of the park.
You have to put the parking in the front.
I have no issue with the 50.
Maybe if we reduce the amount of parking. Don't have to carry as many spaces.
No, the problem is that short parking lot...
It's retail, though.
How often does the parking lot fall into retail?
Depends what goes on.
One of the things that you do have is when you look at the other building, which has been there since 1984, is that the last row of parking has never been used. However, you lease to your tenants and give them the right that was demanded by the town, and so every tenant within this lease has four per thousand of parking. So you couldn't take that away from them until the leases were up, so that creates a constraint. But, you know, clearly, we could look at maybe having egress through, across egress through the parking lot, and maybe in doing that, have some adjustment of the building and the setbacks.
Can you say that building's empty now? That building's empty now.
The building's empty.
No, it's not empty. It's 60 percent full.
60 percent. Again, it's the upstairs with the slope roofs. It's challenging.
But you don't need all the parking, because you're, plus, we've actually redesigned our bylaws. We're not looking for four spaces per thousand anymore anyway, so you could probably ask for relief from that. Use a little bit of that for the parking. The question is, is whether or not we want to allow the 50-foot production, the 100-foot production of the buffer.
We have a choice.
Well, in this case, it makes sense. I mean, one of our criteria is for sensitive areas, and we know the wetlands back there, and the Concomore has concerns, so it does seem to fit. The part that I have an issue with is what you show for buildings, these huge facades, and it's also supposed to be screened by vegetation. You have houses, residential areas across the street.
Done. They have the retention ponds in front.
We have what?
They have the retention ponds in front. That's the vegetation.
This is a...
The vegetation screening for the building.
They have the rain guns.
We're talking about the height of the building, which looks like a Western frontier thing.
This is a landscape plan that was submitted as well, so there are plantings out front that provide some screening. So the proposing trees and rows of bushes are out in front.
But the building we're proposing is a huge facade.
Well, they are gonna go back and work on that.
Right.
Well, that does issue. But it does talk about the special permit.
We'd like them to. We can't make you do it, but we would like you to. We can't make you do it, but we would like you to.
But in the special permit criteria, it does state that about the vegetation screening.
We sort of need to know kind of where you're coming from as far as tenants come. Only because if you're putting something that's gonna have seats in it, we need to, we need to know what the parking is. Give that, you have to provide more than adequate parking for worst-case scenario.
So if they want a special permit, yeah, we'll solve it.
Look, guys, let's try to nail this one at a time, one at a time.
Is the board have any questions, I'd like to open it up to the residents, if there's any neighbors here wanna discuss it. I mean, we can, he, no, wait, time out.
Finish amongst ourselves first.
He knows that we have to do something about redesigning the building, I think he realizes that the board is not thrilled with a square box, okay, so I think he's gonna take that away, so we don't have to beat that dead horse. I just wanna know, does anybody else in the, in the audience who has any questions about it or any concerns? Any of the neighbors here?
I'm one of the neighbors on Russell Street, I guess.
Name please, so that Mark can.
Okay, name is Rob Tooms.
It may be addressed to one seventy Russell Street, and I actually live across the street from the existing office building.
One of the things I notice is very dangerous there, the, there's two driveways from the building across the street that people exit, and so that when I go in my driveway, I see, you have to look, is actually looking, you have to look left, right, and across the street twice. And I'm concerned about the extra traffic that's gonna dump on the road coming out that spot. I'm also concerned about the type of business, businesses might go on there, concerned there's a liquor, they're gonna put a liquor store in there or something else. I got a young child, there are a lot of families in that street, I think most people here would not want a liquor store across the street. Or something that would have a lot of traffic, like a McDonald's coming off the highway. Now, that's my big, my big concern, it's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of traffic in that office building right now across the street. And, you know, given the point hasn't even opened up yet, so we don't even know the volume of traffic that's gonna go in there, and you're not gonna know it till they finish building over there either.
Ma'am, name please?
Deana Flockard, and I'm not a resident of Russell Street. I have children in the Russell Street and middle schools, and I have a business in the center of town. My concerns are the amount of traffic going in and out, because the town has to charge for buses for middle school students, so we're likely to see more middle school students using that sidewalk, and with more traffic in and out, these kids have their headphones on, they're not paying attention. I'm worried about more traffic crossing their path, because we're gonna see more of them walking if there's a sidewalk. I'm concerned about the businesses that go into there, and I'm concerned about the need for more retail space because there's so much emptying center of town.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I have concerns, oh, I'm sorry, Margaret Russell, I live on Berry Bush Road, but I'm very concerned about how attractive Littleton is. I'm concerned that we're winding up with more ugly spaces, more ugly buildings. What's going in on the hillside is so hideous, it makes me awake, weak. I don't wanna see more buildings that make my beautiful town ugly to live in. I don't wanna see businesses that are inappropriate for a small town. I don't wanna see wetlands lost because they have value to how a town functions. I don't wanna see setbacks and marinerie in my town. I know we need a bigger tax base, I know we need more businesses, but what, how can we do it in a way that's sane, that makes our town better to live in, and that we don't have to constantly be breaking our own rules, which we made to keep things under control and keep a playing field for all businesses coming in, when we just keep, we make rules and we change them, we make rules and we change them, this is crazy. The rules were there for a reason, to keep Littleton lovely, to keep Littleton well-built, and to make it a wonderful place to live, I'd like it to stay that way.
Thank you.
What else?
Excuse me? Paper back there.
Something else, no, it's on for the slide.
Well, it's hard to listen to this woman while he's back there having conversations, if he wants to do it somewhere else, it'd be great, so I could.
Are you, um, sorry, are you done back there, yes, I'll, my apologies.
Thank you.
Yeah, to help respond to part of your statement, ma'am, this, this property was owned commercially, well, business, a long, long time ago, so they're not, they're not changing the zoning there. All they're doing is making use of a property that they have an entitled right to use based on our zoning. Does that, does that help explain?
Well, if it's commercial, that's fine, but is it going to be attractive, useful, commercial, or is it gonna be?
Well, that's what, that's what we're trying to do, that's what we're trying to do, that's why I brought up the fact that, look, you know, to, instead of a brick facade and square building, look at, look around you, and look at that building that was built next to the auto dealership, that type of style and concept using local materials is what we're hoping to achieve throughout that whole one nineteen corridor.
And as far as the retail, we went to town meeting, we had the chance to rezone, and it was brought up and approved at town meeting to add this piece as part of the overlay district. The talk originally was not to add this piece, but by adding this piece, we added a retail component to that property over there. So having said that, since we added a retail component, I think we have to give them the relief from the hundred-and-fifty-foot setback, because that's the only way you're gonna be able to put retail on this spot.
And a caveat that goes along with that is that we mandated the use of architectural elements. So it's a carrot and stick.
I didn't quite hear the last.
Oh, so that we, to go along with that, that overlay, what we did was mandate the use of architectural elements that are fitting to the town of Littleton.
Okay, and does the current plan hit those rules?
Well, where?
No, that's what we're talking.
Yeah, no, this, this does not, but when they come back, hopefully, they'll have, they'll have addressed again.
Okay, so where we're at right now is, we have to decide whether, the critical step right now is whether the board is going to allow the reduced frontage setback from the residential. And I think that's the issue, if we allow it, then the board if we don't, then they're counters. Stuck in the tracks. Uh, one more question, yes?
Holly Bell, five oh eight Great Road, I guess I'm just not clear, there is requirements in place for this hundred-foot setback, but they're asking for the exception, and I'm not clear why the board would wanna go ahead and give them exceptions, other than that I did hear reference to the storage unit, the exception was made there, so now we need to make an exception.
Well, you also made an exception on your property too, so if you, you're kind of, I'm sup-
In what?
Yours, yours is own resi, yours is own business as well, and you don't.
No, no, you got Chuck Bell.
Different Bell.
Oh, sorry, oh, sorry, I'm wrong, wrong Bell.
Residential.
I apologize, but when, when we did the overlay, it was, there was the distinctest, we discussed whether or not to include that parcel, having included that parcel, we knew when we did it that you're going to have to allow them to be closer to the road because of what was, what has happened since, since the highway went in with the drainage and everything. There's no way they can ever make that hundred-and-fifty-foot setback, so when we included it, we all knew that that's what we're doing, I apologize about the name.
Where's five oh eight Great Road?
Uh, we are off the little thirty.
Just a police station.
The common drive that goes down to the.
On the lawn when it follows the, 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 the brook.
We back.
Oh, okay, yeah. And a setback quite a bit. So, I guess my concern here, I see how number two of our criteria works, because we're trying to avoid a sensitive area. These are the conditions for setbacks smaller than a hundred-and-fifty feet, and it says, okay, the public interest benefits from the smaller setback, such as superior protection of natural features of the site, the wetlands, or avoidance of sensitive areas, the wetlands, or making feasible, desirable development not otherwise possible, which you cited. But under number one is where the issue is on the architecture, and it says, one, either the topography of the site and its vegetation provide adequate visual screening for the buildings despite the smaller setback, and I don't see that.
Well, we haven't even got there yet.
Or the proposal is harmonious with its surroundings and architectural style, use of materials, color, landscape treatment, so that's where our issue is, but the, these are, this is the checklist for giving us.
Right, but they have to get past, before they, we send them off and tell them we wanted to redesign the building, we wanna see a better landscaping plan, I think they need, it's fair for them to know from us whether or not we're going to go along with the, with the, with the reduced.
Right, from my perspective, for number two, they'd make it, there's no issue there.
Does anyone else have a problem with allowing, telling them that we're gonna allow the waiver for the hundred-and-fifty down the front, is there a problem with this?
Provided, I mean, number one.
We haven't even got to the architectural, and so, we're gonna send them off for the screening, the architectural, maybe a redesign of some of the parking, take some of the other parking. We need to kind of have an idea what kind of businesses are gonna be there, because these are sensitive in the neighborhood. So having said all that, are you, do you have an opposition to reducing the frontage, the front setback requirement from residential to commercial?
I was wondering, should I let them come a little closer?
Okay, just got your answer there, Peter?
I have no problem.
And I certainly don't, in fact, it, it follows suit with the concept of the old village concept where buildings were, were closer to the street.
We'd like to get a better traffic profile from closer.
We're going to take the first step and say that, yes, you could be closer to the residential. Now we wanna see what you're gonna propose to us to, to make it so that it's as unobtrusive as you can, what kind of landscaping, what the building's gonna look like, having told you that we'd like to see something more in character with a colonial-style building, that'll fit the character of the neighborhood, it'll look better, and maybe incorporate, like I said, the fire department wants, wants you to be able to get around the buildings, which we will too.
And we got a sidewalk going down that street too?
There's also, yeah, you have to plan for the sidewalk that's gonna.
It will be a sidewalk.
So you will incorporate a sidewalk into, into the height of your property, or?
The side, we are, I think, just.
They, they show that on the drawings.
The sidewalk, I think the sidewalk's being built by the town.
Exactly.
So, having said that, when would you like to come back?
Just have to work on our redesigns, but I think we'll have to schedule that based on our timing, I don't know.
Do you want us to put you on for a month, you wanna wait more than a month?
No, definitely a month, or less.
Well, we're trying to meet only once a month. Can we, when is our next scheduled meeting, Mark?
August fourteenth.
August fourteenth, where are you going?
I don't have any time yet.
The, one last question for you.
You asked me on one last question.
They have a mandate to have visual screening with vegetation, right?
Yes.
Okay, that, that goes back to my concern about kids walking down the street and cars coming out.
This is the building, not, this is to screen the building, so you don't see the building.
I wanted that concern to be heard as to where screening goes, so that, you know, safety of walkers is taken into account.
There's gonna be a sidewalk, there's gonna be a sidewalk there now, there's gonna be, by the time this is, there'll be a sidewalk built there as well.
Right, I'm worried about people like in and out of driveways and not being able to see the law.
They have to have, they have to have sight line, sight of vision, right? That has nothing to do with the screening, that's, we wanna be able to try to incorporate the building to keep it as low-profile as possible. So the fourteenth.
I'm sorry, one more thing, the parking.
Oh, by the way, you have to, by that time, it will apply for your.
Yes, that's correct, and as far as the reduction in parking, would you be comfortable with the reduction as well? Because that's something that.
We need to know what's going in there, if you were gonna ask us for a waiver, we'd kind of have to kind of know what's going in.
Yeah, the frequency of use, et cetera.
I think, I think making that connection through to the other parking lot, you lose, you lose some spots there, so I think, I think that would certainly be amenable to. Having that connection, that's a, you know, plus, far outweighs, in my mind, the loss of parking.
Okay.
One last thing?
If it's a benign thing, like a bank that's gonna have people coming in and going out, that's one, then we could waive, or if it's gonna be two things that are on open at the same time, then we could look at how the parking.
Yeah, just for the reasons. If you could pick two tenants that be a bank.
I get that, I know you can.
And so, the, until there's something there at lease, you won't be back.
The last thing that I could ask of you is, is this gentleman's, Tooms?
Wrong, Tooms.
I'm really bad with names, you're pretty lucky I remembered any of it, so. Is that one come up pretty much directly across from one driveway, is it possible to make the entrance a little bit off-kilter so they don't line up with the driveway from across the street? Is there, I don't know if that'll work for you.
Well, one of the things, a lot of times, aren't you looking for that?
Usually you want the geometry to.
We can make a go in between, but I, I think that'll line.
That's what I just wanted to make sure that his concerns were addressed of some sorts for, he says you can look left, you can look right, and you look ahead, it's like a four-way stop, no matter how you look at it.
Four-way if they're directly opening up across the street, that's not my house there, but the.
I understand.
That's the, that's the problem, and then it makes it a, you know, that street there, there's cars coming out of that, blocking and also crossing the streets, it was one side of the street that's.
A little more.
Yeah, it's gonna be a little tough. Lot more higher volume.
Okay, so, the fourteenth, if you have something you wanna send to us before you, and have us comment on it before you come in on the fourteenth, in behalf of the, if you get it tomorrow and try to get it to us, we can at least give some feedback before you get here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen, was that far behind?
It's just a little bit behind, we have a A and R for Tehadawong Road.
Let's redesign just this one, huh? Which number is this one?
It's the Allen's A and R. Number seven.
I already looked at this.
Fifty to Farmers Row State. Farmers Row State, seven, eight forty-five, yeah, I'm sure.
Is there any hot brown material in that thing, that box you lifted over there? Candy in it? Anything?
Sorry about that, guys.
Thank you.
About what?
Oh, he complained about it.
Mr. Lalee, is he here?
Trying to trouble. Apparently, we've been bribed again.
Mr., is Mr. Lalee here?
Would you like?
Mr. Lalee.
You have the signature on the settlement agreement. And standing.
Hand court, it's a settlement.
Please, Mr. Lalee, I just wanna know if you, this is a, an A and I that were passed to sign as part of a settlement for the, for land court issue that's been going on since nine, two thousand and eight, correct?
Two thousand and six, actually.
Two thousand and six, and we've been asked to sign this A and R to finalize that. I just wanted to see if Mr. Lalee was here, that's all I was asking. So the Allen's, basically, is the court has asked Mr. Lalee to, or he did, you did do it, correct? Mr. Lalee?
No, Allen's did this.
Oh, you did this, you set this up, okay, so they did an A and R that sets aside what the court has decided, and they want us to sign it. So this is in response to.
Mistake on.
Land court decision. And a settlement.
Mark, could you, could you explain for the public who haven't been following this, what this is about?
This is a, I really don't wanna explain it, because this deals with land court and a settlement on land court. It's an A and I that was, that redefines the property lines between the Lalees and the Allens, and it's that kind of thing.
So it's a redefinition of a property line?
Redefining property.
That the court, the land court has mandated that we approve?
It's a settlement at land court, and it was, to finalize it, it has to be.
And where, where is the property?
This is the property on Tehadawong Road.
Seventy Tehadawong.
Seventy Tehadawong.
And there was a mistake in the deed, I gather, that was my. Right, exactly, so this corrects that, basically, it's a way of correcting it. You've gone through land court, you've gone through a settlement.
Okay.
You're asking for our approval.
So, I'm, I'm moved to approve. So moved, second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So it's done in hall?
There's one other, one other thing that, in order to finalize this, then, this, the Mr. Lalee should really go to the ZBA and, and have this taken care of at the ZBA as well.
Why the, why the Board of Appeals?
Right, because you're signing an A and R that shows a lot with no frontage, and to order to, for him to have a clear title, you should.
Get that approved with the ZBA. That's not ours, the issue is, is that we're signing a lot that has no frontage.
We're concerned about going before the ZBA.
You don't go, he goes.
This is only his concern, you're.
We just wanted to enjoy some of the plans so it can be filed with the registered deeds.
That's, that's exactly what we're doing.
That's what, that's all we.
Wait, wait, this, wait, wait, this is a two-party agreement between you and the Lalees, correct?
Yes, it's signed.
Lalee has signed it?
He's signed it.
And it's, is notarized, everything, so that's all, his signature is on it?
It's, no, no, it's not on this, it's on a settlement from land court.
Where?
We have the court, we have the court.
We have the court agreement, the settlement, we have it, I've read one of those things earlier already, but that is doing nothing more than showing us the swapping of a thirty by, down to a fifteen-foot by X amount of feet long.
Very small amount.
It just mitigates.
Which one gives back, he gives land to you, is that how it looked? And then he has no frontage, presently, but he has.
Part of the land has nothing to do with.
With the frontage or the not frontage.
That is just.
But the house was built before. But the house was built before he bought it anyways, he didn't buy the land and build on it, so somebody messed up originally. That's where we're at, and this settles that?
That settles, exactly.
Fine.
Okay.
As long as it doesn't come back to bite us in the, in the backside for signing a document that isn't.
No, that's why, the Allens are all set, it's signed, and it.
And the Lalees is all set too?
Correct.
What does, what does our town council say to this?
I spoke with town council on it, and the council says that we should sign this. This is the, this is the final act from land court to put this issued arrest that's been going on since, as they said, two thousand and six. This is the settlement.
And this is the only thing before us.
This is the only.
This is our.
Chris and Tom have both reviewed all the documents.
No.
How does he, how do they know?
They've been appraised of it from, from the whole issue with land court, they've been involved with it since it started in land court.
And the attorneys for each side have settled.
Correct, this is a decision from land court. Land court is telling us to sign this. It's part of their settlement.
This is not unusual.
Sounds.
But it goes to land.
Where, where's the official document from land court?
It's twenty-six pages long.
Yeah, and it says that in the information, Marin sent us.
That's the one that I said, if you wanted a copy, please let me know.
Yeah, right, so.
If you read the very end, it says this has to be within sixty days.
We're all good on court, we're all, we're good on camera, all the other things, saying that you're telling us town council says fine, your neck is on the chopping block.
Mine is right there.
So be it, we good?
This looks like it's in. This looks like it's in order.
You hear the order? All right, so we'll sign it and move on. Okay, just to cross the Ts and dot the Is and get the heck out of here.
Just one further question.
Oh, no.
Sign copy tonight.
If you guys would take a few minutes and sign that and sign the two.
Oh, we have, sure, so we have time to Milo as well.
Yeah.
Okay, that's even better.
Have a signing party.
So we're going to get another Milo?
Yep.
This one, I think you've seen.
Signed copies, don't we, two of them?
You'll get this one.
Or you have to sign this with Richard. You have the last one?
As I go around Christmas time, seeing who's getting what. So we're behind schedule now, or we just caught up?
Look, that's enough.
Who's next?
Nah.
You don't get paid by the work, let's move.
Okay, is that all set?
Yeah.
So you did that choice? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a continued special prayer for the hearing, eight thirty. So look at that, we're almost caught up. Chris Andersons?
We're here.
Okay. Marin, did you have a chance to make copies?
I did.
We had to make copies, why doesn't he make copies? Why do we got to pay for all this paper? And are, and are you going to be donating some ink to our inkjet system?
While being on the road.
Well, the road stops here, no more.
Thank you.
All right, I see you guys are moving right along, so for introduction, I'm Jeff Brown with NYSR Corporation, this is Paul, Representative Andersons, they are not here tonight, they were here last meeting. This is an interim meeting, we don't expect any final decision tonight, but as directed last meeting, our office and Green Engineering, that Marin was there to go over their letter, but in particularly, we're bringing back certain items that the board needs to address, and we'd like to address some, if not all, of the waiver requests tonight to give both Green Engineering International and ourselves direction so we could finish the plan. In other words, if you grant the waiver, we design it one way, if you don't grant the waiver, we design it another. So I'll go through them, and in, the document you have before you is, it lists the section that we're looking for the waiver, my discussion of it, and Green's initial response in italics. And there's a couple, double a dozen of them. All right, so grades, a small section of the roadway, we're asking for a waiver from eight percent to ten percent, and they take no exception to this waiver. How do you want to do it, Mr. Chin, you want to do it one by one?
I'm going to ask the board if they have an initial one by one. Anybody have a problem with this, one little section of the road? I think ten is our maximum anyway, right? But it's not a major one, what about a minor one, is it ten?
We're good, I'm good.
Yeah, I mean, this, this sounds reasonable.
We're good, okay.
Green's okay to get that.
We're going to need a vote at some point on these, you want to take it tonight, and that'll be the official vote? I'm not pushing you, but.
Sounds like it, feels like it.
Let's get through the individual items first.
You don't want them to vote inside the hearing, do you?
That's probably true, Marin, okay. General, you're okay, I'll take that to Nick.
So we'll write okay on that one, all right?
All right, B, twenty-one lots versus twenty, twenty's your maximum on a loop road, one entrance, we have twenty-one, you remember the discussion that we had, and how the generation of this plan was generated, and Green responded that they refer to you.
We're good, I'm good.
So twenty-one lots in this, sir.
And you took them, we were going to have more, you took them away, and you added one to do. I don't have a problem with that.
Move on.
Next one, it's a long discussion, but essentially, if you make a finding in your decision that the speed limit is twenty miles an hour, which Green agrees with, then we don't need a couple of the waivers, this was one of them that we requested last time. It handles a bunch of issues on details of the design. Roadway cross-section. This is a, this one should be discussed, we're asked to speak for Cape Cod berm for this roadway, no curving at all for this roadway because it's part of the LID, and obviously no roadway here. So your requirement is vertical granite curb, which I think it looks more like a city street than a rural or suburban.
How about granite curb coming in, and then you can turn to Cape Cod?
That's exactly what I was thinking for a good compromise, I think that makes for a nice look on a entrance, and that'll change your Cape Cod.
That's going to be the problem with.
Vertical, or do you want slopes?
Slope. I like slope.
The only thing I don't like about that personally is, is after two or three years of the plows hitting them, they're bashed all over the place.
The Cape Cod.
Either one.
Yeah.
They both, you can see them all over the guy, people's front yards from getting bashed by the, and we're going to end up taking that road over.
Should be vertical.
I think.
When we go granite.
I'd rather either, just right now, see it done as granite, or leave it up to have a discussion with the highway department.
Yeah.
And see what their, their longevity, if he says, you know, after a while the stuff stands up, fine, I'd rather leave that up and talk to.
Well, most of them have been going to Cape Cod berm anyway.
I don't care what most of them are doing.
I would like to defer that to a discussion with.
And Ashley, I'll be honest with you, I push when I need to push, this one doesn't matter, it's just a note of the plan and a detail, I can make that change relatively.
Do you know, right?
Pardon?
Will I get rid of? No, he wants, he wants granite all the way around.
You want granite all the way around?
Very, very expensive, Peter.
Yes, I know that, but I, it's, but when we turn around and have to start replacing, you know, Cape Cod berms every four or five years, it gets expensive for the town.
I mean, the state's not even putting concrete on, on one ten.
They're putting granite.
I don't care what they're doing, I, we don't, you know, we pay through our taxes all over the place, but if we, if it's done right once, we don't have to pay for it again and again and again.
All right, so then we'll get Jimmy's.
Just want to ask Jimmy how he feels, and I'll go with that, okay?
Catchphrase and location, you require that we flip catchphrases on the upstream corner, we have a rain guard in here, it's part of the lid, you don't want to put a catchphrase on a rain guard, that's the whole intent of the design, I presume that's not a problem, and I think you are, you have no issue with that before.
Okay.
And you say you want lit, that's how you have to have it, so. All right, this is a good one, trees every, your regulation requires trees to be planted on both sides of the roadway every forty feet, it doesn't define forty, alternating, obviously we're going to put them on both sides of the roadway, it doesn't say whether you alternate. That's how I look at it, I'd rather do two by two by two, so to make it clear, I've asked to go seventy-five feet.
Oh, I'd rather more trees than less.
What? He's not giving us more.
They're taking out hundreds of trees right now.
This whole perimeter will be enveloped by trees, as you know, we have tree lines and tree savings, and the whole part of this thing is not to necessarily be a forested subdivision, and I think seventy-five feet works, these are going to be fifty-foot trees, big trees.
So it's defining the road, the.
What do you mean, they're going to be here?
Well, thirty-five foot trees, every, every seventy-five feet, every seventy-five feet is basically.
Almost two per, it's almost two per frontage.
Are you talking about leaving existing trees there for?
No, these will all be gone.
You're going to whack the whole site.
Except for right here.
So where are you going to put, you're going to put seventy-five foot trees in as?
No, no, no.
Every seventy-five feet, thirty-five foot high trees.
Thirty-five, that's what I mean, thirty-five foot trees.
Thirty-five, that's the maximum growth height, thirty-five. So there'll be more than two trees, more than one tree every lot, in other words, this lot here will have two trees, this lot here will have one and a half trees, this lot here will have one and a half trees, and so forth, all the way around. Forty feet, there'd be two and a half per lot.
Exactly, yeah, the more tree, I.
You want more trees.
I want more trees, they're taking out hundreds.
I think forty feet is too close, just so you know, think about it, forty feet.
Then we go.
But you're putting a big tree back.
What's that? They don't, they don't trim them back once they start.
No, you're putting a big tree back.
We're putting the, I can't remember the name of the tree, it's some kind of a maple, it's a special maple that will grow to thirty-five, forty feet high.
It will grow to thirty-five feet.
What do you think so it could be?
The regular street tree size.
If you had like one tree per front yard, that would.
So they're going to be about ten to twelve feet high, and three inches in diameter at the base, isn't that one of the things we did with the one off of Harvard, made the base of the tree X amount of size so that it required the tree to be three to four years old?
Three inch at breast height, is that everything, instead of two and a half inch? No, it's two and a half at breast height.
Thirty linear.
So three inch one would be like three more years old.
Well, at his breast height.
His breast height is four and a half.
All right, so why do we do that? The bigger tray you have.
Not his.
Less trees, but better, bigger, better trays.
Not, not taller.
Not, not the seventy-five foot.
Basically an older tree.
You just want like.
So you're not going to have little thin little trees?
No, but maximum height thirty feet, right, that's it.
But we, we didn't, we're not, we're not at seventy-five feet, I hope.
Two every seventy-five feet, as opposed to one every forty alternating.
Horizontally.
One, one every lot.
One per lot.
They will have that, it will meet that, it will meet that criteria plus.
What's the linear, what's the, what's the linear in the frontage?
We're talking, so we're talking really five feet here.
No, no, what's his, what's the linear on the, because there's a smaller lot.
Eighteen hundred, so there's thirty-six trees on thirty, on twenty-one lots.
Yeah, it's plenty of trees, Richard.
Thirty-six trees on twenty-one lots, that's what I'm saying, one and a half.
You're alternating, he's, he's not putting one, trees opposite each other, he's putting them like.
No, I want to put them opposite each other.
Yeah, that's why you ask.
Twenty-one lot, you'd need forty-two trees.
Okay, but.
Thirty-six trees.
What is the, what's going to be the width of the foliage in the tree?
It's going to be like thirty, forty feet.
No.
So.
Not at thirty-five feet tall, it won't be.
Well, it depends, no, like a, like a fruit tree, or?
No, these are no-wood trees, they'll be literally twenty feet wide, so twenty.
Twenty times.
Two, it'd be twenty, they'd be hitting each other.
That's what I'm saying.
Every forty feet, that's why I don't want you to do that, then you turn it into a dark enclosed area.
That's what I'm saying.
You don't want that.
Every seventy-five feet, anybody have a problem with?
In other words, more than half of the linear feet will be covered by trees.
What was that?
He is saying, one on each side of the road.
Every seventy-five.
So every seventy-five feet, two trees.
Correct.
Seventy-five feet, two trees. Seventy-five feet, two trees.
Right.
That's what he's saying.
So if the tree has a, what the hell is the term, foliage?
Caliper.
Canopy.
Canopy, thank you.
If it has a canopy that's thirty feet wide.
It's not going to be.
It's going to be twenty.
Twenty feet wide.
Because of the type of maple you're using.
Those people may not want it.
So twenty times thirty-six.
But you're going seventy-five feet before you catch, before you hit another tree.
I know, it's, that's pretty good, otherwise we're going to start cutting down.
So you, seventy-five, and you take forty feet, twenty feet, well, it's actually ten feet, because the total canopy is twenty feet, ten feet per side. Well, I just, you want to, do you want to discern now, or you want to discern later, so?
Trees, two trees together on opposite sides of the road.
Seventy-five feet.
Sixty feet, sixty feet apart.
It leaves an opening.
No less than one per, per lot.
It leaves forty feet opening between trees, is what it leaves, by the time the full canopy is in.
I put forty-two trees in, done.
Done.
Forty-two trees.
Let, let.
Whatever that turns out.
The board has to fight with us.
Manically. That's what I'm telling you.
Forty-two trees, it's reasoned, okay, okay. Forty-two trees, it's reasonable. Okay, okay. Water study. We've been informed, and the water department and I will get, I tend to get a letter from you saying water supply is adequate. They told us that, they had no issues. We got a letter saying, no problems, but do you want a specific letter on this? And if you get that, would you provide a waiver?
Correct.
That's what I'm asking for, and so it sounds good. Catch basin location. This one section is the beginning of the road, which has no real large, no real offsite areas. We have 344 feet from the high point to the catch basin. Your requirement is 300 feet. I think Green has no problem as long as we prove to them that the gout of line spread will be no wider than six feet, which we will do. So, under that condition, would you grant the waiver?
Yeah.
Which we haven't done yet, so...
I said yes, just so you know, I'm not always, no, no guy.
Surcharge of the outlet pipe. This is a little bit technical, but you have a regulation which you really should change, because basically drainage goes down, 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 gets to the, near the wetland, and that's where you go into the detention basin, and then you discharge out to the wetland. You have a two foot, you want, for some reason, two feet between that discharge point and the bottom of the basin. You don't want to have any surcharging. Well, that's what happens all the time. That's what we designed its surcharge. When it backs up, backs up into the pipe. You're saying you want it to be free discharge. It's not reality. It's not even good. You create an, you need an energy dissipator now. You're not running water into water. You're running water into the air. There's all kinds of reasons why you don't want it. It's not required under the DEP. I don't know why you have it there, and Luke and I talked about it, and I think he says he takes no exception to it.
Are you passionate about that issue?
Yes, I think it's a dumb regulation. I don't know why you have it in there. You should change it.
Who put it in there?
Now, hey!
Should we make a note that we'll take that recommendation for modification?
No, we'll just say okay.
Okay, we should put it in.
Have an air raid that you're saying that doesn't...
You don't want that. You don't want...
Maybe we should have the police station write a letter.
Okay, next.
Dissipate, yeah.
Yes. You're gonna need this for Jim. You're gonna wait for Jim on this one? We have some pipes, types that we want to make sure that he's okay with. Are you require RCP? We want it on when to go offsite. We want to use plastic pipe because it's easy to handle. You're gonna want to comment from him on that, so we'll refer to that. Street lighting. All right. This is kind of a big one, and it's an aesthetic one, so think about this. You require, can you pass these around? You require, not street lights, you require post-mounted lights individually switched by each individual homeowner. So, there'd be 21 lights here.
Oh, great.
I would prefer to go with 10 street lights instead, which you'd say, why would I want to spend more money? I'm looking at it from an aesthetic point of view. I think it would look better. It would also be safer, because you were requiring, by your regulation, you're requiring someone to flick the switch every night, and what happens if they don't flick the switch and so forth? So, we propose 10 street lights spread throughout the property. This is the...
10 street lights over how many feet? 1800 feet?
Yeah, 10 street lights and 1800.
The only problem with that is now the town owns the streetlights, as opposed to the rest of the...
Oh, the...
We wired them to the house.
Is that on tape, right?
The association will, will have that.
These houses sold individually.
This association?
I think that's a political issue.
That's the political, that's the political, and it's marrying aesthetics. What you're trying to do to the site, safety and politics, all married together. That's a planning board decision.
No, so there's no association?
Well, there will be an association, but we don't want to add that into the mix. The only purpose to the association here is to all of the open space.
No, and that's getting transferred to town, so there won't be...
So, there won't be, there may not be an association.
Well, I mean, as a, as a planning board member, I think that's a great idea. As a citizen, I don't want to pay for your lights.
Right.
So, that's, now, you don't have to make that decision. Now, the plan shows the lights.
How many lights?
10 lights.
10 lights.
Think about it, discuss it.
You should show it the way the bylaws is. You should show the lights.
Well, I don't even have to show them. They're individually, they go on private lots.
You talk to the light department?
No.
Well, the light department doesn't...
If you had 10 lights, what's that, 880 feet? Basically, 10 times 1800, 880.
But these are gonna be on all night, right?
No, no, they go off. They, they can put on timers. One, basically, one, two, three here at the entrance, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Just kind of spread throughout, highlighted at the entrance.
So, are you gonna have to work out when they go off?
Yeah, they'll be...
Do we have the thing? Would you just like the street lights in town now?
So, you need an answer on that?
Sure, because it has a diffuser, so it shuts it down and all that, like a cutoff.
Do we need to ask the light department?
Do you need an answer on that now?
Take it under advisement, talk politically amongst yourselves, do all that.
We should go and look at different subdivisions and see how the lighting is, so that's what we'll do.
Do that, because it's a big difference. When you're trying to tell everybody to flip this, which is these three people put them on, the rest of them don't, it doesn't really work, so...
What's the height of the light?
Twenty foot.
This says 20 feet.
Twenty feet.
It is 20 feet, that's...
Yeah, it's right above the luminosity. I mean, sometimes they're very bright lights, which are...
You can pick a luminosities. Page two, you can see on number two, you can pick all those. Normally, people do 250 watts, but you could go smaller.
Well, ask the authorities.
All right.
How much are these globes to buy when the kids get a little exercise in?
They're expensive.
Oh, when you smash them.
Yeah, yeah, slingshots and bows and arrows.
All right.
That's good hunting area.
This is...
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk. I don't know why you have cement concrete.
Yes.
For residential subdivision in a rural, suburban area.
They should be pavers, right? Like some unilock pavers would look nice. Is that what you're after?
You like one pavers?
Well, they're a little bit too modest, yeah.
Yeah, but then who's gonna redo that?
There is a grass strip throughout, so who knows?
There's a, I was witnessing a new, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
How wide is the grass strip between the sidewalk and the street and the curb?
Good question. And this is a cost, aesthetics, and long-term maintenance issue. Three foot.
Okay, still concrete, concrete sidewalks.
What's the difference in life?
Ah, tremendous.
How much?
The cost, you mean?
Probably more than double.
Twice is more than twice the cost.
Double the life.
Double the life.
Twice the cost.
So, if we cut, you stock on the development cost...
No, life is an issue, because it has to do with trees that you just asked to be planted, because the trees are gonna lift up the roots, and you've seen downtown where it messes it up. These are gonna be big trees with big roots, and they're gonna mess up the sidewalk.
Yeah.
But the tuminis does a lot less.
Oh, but tuminis does get the humpty dumpties, and it's a pain in the neck, whereas if it's concrete, and you got the divisions, you just break out one, and you cut that root, and you're...
The tuminis is called flexible pavement.
That's correct. Flexible pavement for their roads.
I just, again, I saw something that was pretty nice for, oh, it was pervious. It almost went down like bricks. It wasn't bricks, but it allowed the grass to grow up in between them. It was pretty nice stuff, and it, I think it's gonna be a lot less money than both.
I've seen it, too.
I can't remember what it's called. It allows you to put utilities underneath the thing and dig them up without wrecking everything under the face of the earth, and you're gonna be able to put it right back down again.
I've seen them, too. They're, some of them like a mats, too. They lay it down, they come in a unit, and you drop them down.
Those are for, those are for off-street parking. Those are, if you have grass growing up to a sidewalk, it'll, you'll end up having no...
But it's not, it's not a...
You can't have grass in a sidewalk.
There was something funky about it, whatever it helped with.
The ones I saw were concrete.
We're giving relief on the, on the concrete, on the, on the granite curb throughout the whole...
Well, you haven't yet, so make, so think about that. I think a trade of one or the other is in order.
Not necessarily.
We'll take it up with you.
Well, who's gonna own the street?
We are, so we'll take it up with you.
We are gonna own the street.
We're gonna own the sidewalks and the streets.
So, we're gonna defer to Jim.
Okay, so when are you coming back?
I'm on.
Okay.
I presume you want us to work it out between the two offices, so that you get as clean a letter as you can.
Correct.
I had the question from, I read from what Mark, Maren had, that there were some changes.
I haven't made any yet. I do a global change. We've got some comments from the butters. I got all the town comments. We're still waiting, I think, for Jim's comments and fire departments, which we'll push, and we'll get one big global change.
Okay.
Jim, Jeff, can you check with light and water, see if there's a town standard that they are shooting for?
That's what I'm doing, we share the lights.
Because, because I'll tell you, if this is gonna be town light, we want to make sure that they don't have to buy a separate type of bulb for this, a custom bulb if they have a, if they buy bulbs and bulbs for once.
Did you agree solid on your August meeting date?
August 14th.
No, you're gonna have September if you'd like.
They're for my birthday. Don't, you don't have to bring...
He's trying to plan his vacation.
Right, so it sounds like it.
I don't think you really need to be here, to be perfectly honest.
No, I'm serious.
Where are you going?
We think if we get everything in order, we usually get a decision to close the year on the 14th, so...
Break on a vacation?
I don't know how to spell it.
That's a lovely town.
It's, I'm bored. But anyway.
I don't even know how to spell that word, vacation. What the hell is that?
I gotta be here, you're gonna...
10 years, I think I ain't been on one of those?
Time.
Uh, what time?
Time.
Want to do them early, since it's already closed?
9:10.
No, how about, no, let's do them on...
9:10.
We got 7:30?
Oh, 9:10.
7:30?
Sure.
Oh, you guys don't have fun anymore, do you?
We're leaving now.
That's what my client now says.
Don't let us down.
Thank you.
Okay.
Perfect.
Yes, sir.
Can we, can we ask some questions?
Sure. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Tom Coughlin, Coughlin Road. There'll probably be some blasting in the tree near the wells on Wickham Out. I'm sorry, it's on, yeah, it's on Wickham Out. And we'll, do we, do we need to have a, the new light and water department take a look at that and see if it's gonna have a problem with the wells due to the blasting?
If they're gonna do blasting, they have to go through a whole criteria. They're gonna have to do pre and post. They're gonna have to have the seismologists out there to check everything, check the wells, check your wells, your houses.
That's not part of your plan to blast?
It's not part of our plan. Obviously, we showed the cuts and fills, but we haven't hit, whatever, we haven't hit any ledge.
No ledge, right?
On that side of the road.
Okay, because I'm very concerned about the town water supply, and again, so, you know, if in fact you do do that, I guess I'd want that, that process to take place.
They have to do it.
And when you go through the fire department, it doesn't also get strictly with the water department and...
Mr. Coughlin, if you're concerned with the town water supply and blasting, we should probably get you on the quarry closure committee, because that's, that's an issue right now, where the quarry, bottom of the quarry is far below our aquifer and only a short distance from it.
Okay.
And, and if the right blast goes off on the right spot, it could do an unbelievable job to the aquifer.
Do you aren't that feels like...
Now, Savos is aware of that, and they're working with the, with Middlesex. As Middlesex does their quarrying, they're quarrying to find out where the natural fissures are, so that they can be careful with those fissures. But when, that quarry, quarry committee, I believe Mark and Janet was on that, and Janet is not on this board anymore, so maybe, Mark, we should consider revitalizing the quarry committee and revamping the membership of that committee.
We should find out where, where they're at with the...
Because that's, that's an issue that needs to not fall off the radar screen.
What?
The quarry is below the aquifer. Much, much, the aquifer is 40, 40 feet. The quarry's already 80 feet below, and it's only a few hundred yards away from the aquifer.
Didn't they say they had 100 years of material in there?
They're going down another 60 feet.
Anyway, that's not for this discussion. Anyone else have any other questions?
So, at that point...
Yes.
They'd be a total of 120 feet below the aquifer.
I'm interested in your response to the blasting question, because I've been listening to blasting.
Wait here, what was being said? Sorry, what was it you said?
No, I'm interested in your response to the blasting question, because I've been listening to blasting 600, 700 feet from my house all summer long. Boom, boom.
Where's that?